Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Martin and I want to welcome you on behalf of the Cape Fear Economic Development Council. Our organization's mission is to fulfill the need for leadership in sustainable economic development in the region. Tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates for the new Hanover County Board of Commissioners. We've invited them here to discuss one of the key issues of this campaign: economic development. So in 2012, what do we consider economic development? Well frankly, the goal of economic development is to stimulate investment in an uncertain economy. It's going to require innovative public policy and it's going to require innovative business practices. In order to create jobs, we have to think smarter about our economic development practices and principles. In Hanover County, we've got a 9.3% unemployment rate. That's an improvement over last year, which was 10.3%. But it still means that nearly 10,000 people in Hanover County are out there looking for jobs today. What do companies want? The ones that are thinking about coming here, the ones that are searching for a place to put down roots? The ones that are here and are considering growing their businesses here? According to a recent series in the Star News on economic development, "The Bottom Line: Mixed with a Good Quality of Life." So they want to be able to make money, but they also want a great place to live. So tonight's topic: economic development. We look forward to a spirited discussion. And our question to the Commissioner candidates is: What role will you play in our local economic recovery? I want to remind everyone that we are streaming the audio for tonight's event. The audio will also be available on WHQR's website. And video and audio will be on CapeFearEDC.org also. So now I'll turn things over to our moderator, Rachel Lewis-Hilburn, who is the News Director here at WHQR. Rachel?
Thank you very much, and welcome to this candidate's forum. Tonight, we're joined by all six candidates for New Hanover County Commission. They are vying for three open seats on the commission. We're also joined by two journalists who will be asking questions of our candidates during the first portion of the forum. During the second portion, we will allow members of the audience to ask questions. We will also have some explicit rules for that portion of the forum. So if you're thinking about a question at this point, just keep in mind a few guidelines which we will repeat when we get to that point. The question must be in the form of a question. You will have a 30-second time limit. You must address the question to all of the candidates present. No statements will be allowed. And as I said, we'll repeat those instructions when we get to that portion, along with some additional clarifications. But for now, let's meet our six candidates. Beginning in alphabetical order, at the far end, we have Jonathan Barfield Jr. Hello, Jonathan. He is broker and owner of Barfield &amp; Associates Realty. He was elected to the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners in 2008. He served as Vice Chair in 2010, Chairman in 2011, and is once again Vice Chair of the Commission. Mr. Barfield serves on three State Association of County Commissioners committees. These include intergovernmental relations, tax and finance, and justice and public safety. Mr. Barfield says he represents all 200,000-plus citizens in the county regardless of political party, race, or socioeconomic status. And he says there's still a great deal of work to be done on economic development and job creation, increased pay for teachers, and improving the flow of traffic in the county by working more closely with the NC DOT. Beth Dawson, hello, Beth. She retired from banking after a 21-year career. She's currently a North Carolina real estate broker. A native North Carolinian, Ms. Dawson attended Salem Academy, NC State University, and Cape Fear Community College. She's a member of the Cape Fear Museum of History and Science Advisory Board and the Southeastern North Carolina Regional Economic Development Commission. She served two terms on the New Hanover Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees and Foundation Board of Directors. Ms. Dawson says, "The citizens deserve a Board of Commissioners made up of individuals with proven public service records, genuine commitments, and the time to serve." She says all citizens should be represented, and she believes there's a need for diversity among county leadership. Derek Hickey, MD, hello, Dr. Hickey. Dr. Hickey is an orthopedic surgeon and owner of Port City Orthopedics. He graduated from Yale University and the University of California, San Francisco School of Medicine. He's currently a member of the Hanover County Board of Education. Dr. Hickey says Hanover County's assets, such as the natural environment, UNCW, CSDC, an excellent public school system, and a motivated and talented population will be the basis of an economic rebound. Dr. Hickey says he will work to strengthen ties between the Board of Ed and the Board of Commissioners. And he says lowering taxes and eliminating unreasonable regulatory burdens will create an economy that will put people back to work. Robert C. Murray III, hello, Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray graduated from Harvard High School in 1970. He retired from the US Army and local industry. And he's been a volunteer firefighter for 21 years. Mr. Murray was born and raised in Hanover County, and he says he's running for County Commissioner to give something back. He says he'd like to reduce taxes and spending. Woody White, hello, Mr. White. He is self-employed as an attorney at White &amp; Hearn here in Wilmington. He earned a BA in history from Southern College in Tennessee. His law degree is from the University of Nebraska. Mr. White is a former North Carolina state senator appointed to fill an unexpired term in 2004. He's also served on the boards of Hanover Regional Medical Center, Habitat for Humanity, and Coastal Horizons. He says he wants to be part of the solution to challenges and will work hard to bring people together to confront them. He also says he'd like to change the tone of the discourse in local government. And it's imperative to see innovative ways of collaborating with other towns and cities. Rob Zappel, hello, Mr. Zappel. Rob Zappel is a licensed general contractor and owner of a small business, Rob Zappel Design and Build. He graduated from the University of Virginia. Mr. Zappel is the former president of the Board of Trustees of Thaneley &amp; Hall Center for the Performing Arts. He currently serves on two local boards: WHQR's Friends of Public Radio and the Cape Fear Green Building Alliance. Mr. Zappel and his wife have three children, all of whom attended Hanover County Public Schools and graduated from North Carolina universities. As a small businessman, he says he's pushing for cooperation among elected officials. He says he leads by consensus building and that he believes in the effective and efficient use of the taxpayer's dollar. He also says he supports clean industries and smart commercial development. Now let's meet the journalists who will be asking the questions. Tricia Vance, to my immediate right, is the editorial page editor of the Star News. Welcome, Tricia. And Vicky Janowski, next to her, is editor of the Greater Wilmington Business Journal. Scott Oden, will you raise your finger, Mark? He is a board member of the Cape Fear Economic Development Council, and he is also our master timekeeper. The format will go like this. Tricia and Vicky will begin with their prepared questions. Each candidate has two minutes to respond to each question. We will rotate the order in which the candidates answer questions and candidates. If at any point you would like to have a question repeated, please let us know that. Scott, the timekeeper, will signal when 15 seconds remains. And can we see a sample of that signal, Scott?
Actually, I've pulled them on an iPad. They're actually giving you the last 30 if you didn't count them.
Great, okay. And can all the candidates see that? When time is up, he will ring the bell as he demonstrates. Let's begin. Tricia, would you please deliver your first question to Jonathan Barfield?
We're here to talk about economic development, but obviously, economic development depends on a lot of things that the Commissioners do in delivering services. One of those services is disposal of trash. The County Commissioner's recent vote to reject the contract with Covanta to overhaul the waste-to-energy incinerator was the latest in a series of proposals for about two decades to reach that point only to be voted down. What should we do about the county's garbage, and what is your plan? What do you propose?
I was very surprised when the vote went the way that it did. I voted in the affirmative to indeed enter into a contract with Covanta. Solid waste has been a problem for our community for quite a while. My dad circled the board of county commissioners when waste tech was initially built back in the mid-'80s. Understanding that you can't build any new landfills east of I-95, there were new regulations that you don't see in the past. The contract that our staff worked out with Covanta, to me, was perfect. It addressed the concerns that we had and, out of nowhere, the concern for flow control. And my question then was, we entered into a contract with R3, which was a startup company, and flow control should have been involved then, but it was not. And to have that at the last minute, I just could not understand. I understand now that our staff are actually looking at ways to address some of Rich's concerns about flow control. But there are really no guarantees for anything, but we have to solve this problem. In my opinion, we must enter into a contract with Covanta, get Waste Tech or our stuff rebuilt and refurbished, and start burning the majority of our trash. Right now, 100% of our trash is going into our landfill, which is indeed decreasing the life of our landfill, which to me is totally unacceptable. Hopefully, it will revisit us either with its current board or with the new board this morning after December. Hopefully, my goal will be to make it with this current board. It will take quite a bit, in my opinion, to get a new board up to speed on the intricacies of the contract that we have with Covanta.
Thank you. Vicky, would you address your question to... I'm sorry. Beth Dawson, please answer the question and let us know if you'd like to repeat it. I will, yeah.
Please repeat it.
Tricia, would you please repeat the question for Beth?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the County Commissioner's recent vote to reject the contract with Covanta was most recent in a lot of different contracts. Basically, what should we do about the county's garbage situation? And what would your plan be? What would you propose to put on the table?
Well, I never thought that I would ever have learned so much about trash as I have, as I've sat through the work sessions and meetings over the last several months. But we do have a critical issue here with only six years left of life with our current landfill. As the County Commissioner to the current board, if they get that back on the agenda or the new board, considers the economically feasible options for extending the life of our landfill, I think in the meantime, we should be sending that solid waste to commercial, available landfills at lower cost to our citizens. Until such time we determine we can economically and it's feasible and effective at that time to, I think, rebuild instead of refurbish this 30-year-old facility, then I believe that we should look for alternative ways to extend our landfill. And I think we need to get to work on permitting the additional acreage that the county owns for landfill space.
Thank you. Derek Hickey?
Sure, this waste disposal topic has been in the news several years, as Vance points out. There's several things we can agree on. We can agree that improved economic development, what people want is a nice place to live, and they want costs to be low. They want low taxes, low costs. The second thing we can agree on is that it was a bit strange that flow control became an issue at the 11th hour. You would have thought that the Commissioner, working on this for months to years, would have at least addressed that problem before they went down this path. I myself am against burning things in our environment. As a physician, you know I'm concerned about our environment. One of the things that did come up in these discussions was that this waste-to-energy treatment plant would have produced as much if not more sulfur dioxide, mercury, and fine particles in our environment. These are all the reasons that people have been attacking a tight cement plant, and for obvious reasons. Well, I'm a little surprised at this environmental concern, burning our trash when there are other viable options available, but we're never brought up. As an example, the current tip fee is $59. I believe at a transfer station, there was a proposal by Waste Industries for a transfer station that would dispose of our waste at $40 a ton. This would have maintained our landfill's capacity, because that is very important, as Mr. Barfield did explain. It's unlikely we will be able to permit a new landfill east of 95, so it is crucial that we keep landfill space. But again, I think it's more economically feasible to go with a transfer station, and it's more environmentally friendly, and it's better for the health and well-being of our citizens. So that would be my proposal, a transfer station. It's already been proposed by a company that works in the free economy, employing people and competing to keep costs low.
Thank you. Robert Murray?
Yeah, ma'am. You spoke of trash as always a problem, and that's one thing that we've always looked at. Going back with the Equinova, there are probably some things there that a lot of us don't know. But yes, we do need to do something to expand life for our landfill, where we have, you know, more time. And we should pursue going ahead and getting the permit that required to expand that life landfill now. And let's not wait until the 11th hour. I think we should move forward, try to either, as Beth said, rebuild completely or refurbish, either one. But we need to have more options than just one on the table.
Thank you. Woody White?
Folks, we have dual duties to our present citizens, our 206,000 friends and family that live here, and also to future generations. When we talk about sustainable development, it connotes under its auspices also sustainability up to serve our environment while we live and consume things in this community. The Covanta contract is confusing to me. Flow control has always been an issue. And our county attorney sat there during this meeting, you know, last week. I'm not sure why flow control wasn't talked about before now. Our paper 19 years ago went through a series on the lawsuit that Waste Industries filed against us with flow control. The county had the lower tip fees in 1993, $60 to $25. It cost $7,400 a day of taxpayer money. They went to federal court. They fought it out. So the waste haulers held us hostage. Landfills sprang up all across eastern North Carolina, and the hauler said, "You know what? We're not paying your high tip fees to sustain your incinerator." They used the free market to hold us hostage. So here we are 20 years later, at the 11th hour, dealing with the contract, when all of a sudden, flow control comes up. Betty Fodden, who used to be a reporter for the Star, then just wrote article after article after article about this, over, over, and over. Some of you might remember that. I sure do. So I was puzzled last week when I sat in that meeting and saw this. So it's not a new issue. Flow control's always been there. How do we contract and make sure that we have enough solid waste to go into the incinerator? Now, I don't know if I would vote for it or not. But I tell you one thing, I would be up to speed on it. I wouldn't be surprised by the issues of the 11th hour. And I would ask the right questions of our county staff and our leaders, and I'd be prepared to vote when I showed up to the meeting. That's the type of winner I would vote for.
Robert Zappel?
The Commander's proposal, to me, is about taking responsibility as a county and as a community for our solid waste issues. It was completely distressing to me to watch the County Commissioner's vote that happened on his last Monday. They have left us with no solid waste policy, no strategy on how to deal with this essential service. That is also a public health issue as well. Taking responsibility and also changing the way we look at trash, which is what Covanta and the proposal was asking us to do. Instead of putting our trash as something that we bundle up in plastic and put it down into the ground and have it around for literally hundreds if not thousands of years, to begin to look at it as an energy stream, which is what it is. The Covanta proposal would be acting when we take our trash and put it into the Covanta incinerator, and at the other end, we get 34,000 megawatts per year of electricity. That's enough to light up and bring electricity to 3,000 local homes, as well as to operate the entire facility. It also, for the first time, would give us the framework of a recycling program that we could use for the county. People that I've spoke to around the county want a recycling, comprehensive recycling program. And through there, we could create revenue streams through the electricity generation and recycling, as well as extend the lifetime, lifespan, with the six years left on our landfill. We could extend that by doubling it right away by taking a hold of this proposal. Again, the most troubling part is, as elected officials, they have left us without a policy. There's no strategy. Think what that looks like to the CEO of businesses that are looking to our area when we can't even take control of this most basic, essential service. Essentially, they have left us running as a sea of garbage.
Thank you. Vicky Janowski, from the Greater Wilmington Business Journal, please address your first question to Beth Dawson.
Julie actually posed my first question to Vicky, so that she does have a chance to actually answer it and ask you. In your opinion, what approach should the county be taking toward economic development? And what role would she play if you were elected as County Commissioner in that effort?
Quite frankly, I think that New Hanover County should be a leader in the region and across the state. We are a leader, and we need to have Board of Commissioners who are pro-business, who will look for solutions and have the willingness to work collaboratively across the region. One thing I have learned while serving on the North Carolina Southeast Commission is that it's imperative that many counties work together to recruit and retain business, as well as encourage employers to start business. I think that we need to look at ways that we can work together. All of these different Economic Development Councils that are in town should be working together to form a strategy, a long-term strategy in order to promote our region. We have tremendous assets, and of course, we talked about our quality-of-life resources. We need to recruit business that is going to be compatible with our coastal environment. I feel that it's important that we also offer a quality education system. That's one thing that businesses will look at. And we need to make sure that we have wonderful, wonderful options for education. We already have our Cape Fear Community College, our university here. The assets that the Community College can offer with job training programs and retraining programs are important assets to businesses as they look to relocate. So I would support working with our Board of Education and our Cape Fear Community College to make sure that they are successful.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind the candidates, if you would like the question repeated at any point, please let us know that. Derek Hickey?
Sure, please repeat the question.
What approach should the county be taking toward economic development? And what role would you play as a Commissioner in those efforts?
Sure. Well, you know, in Hanover County, we're blessed. We're blessed with a beautiful environment. We're blessed with a first grade university in UNCW, Cape Fear Community College, as well as an excellent public school system. We need to leverage these resources. One of the things we need to do is we need to ask businesses, as was postulated earlier, what do businesses want? Well, businesses want low taxes, a decreased regulatory environment, to get unnecessary regulations out of the way. As an example, in today's Wilmington Business Journal, there was an article on GE Hitachi. Now, GE Hitachi just received NRC approval to perform laser enrichment. However, Wilmington Business Journal spoke with GE Hitachi. They said, "Well, we have to look about whether this is going to be cost-effective to do it in this area." Well, what we need to do is we need to go to all of our businesses. We're blessed. We have industry of GE, industry of Corning. We need to ask these businesses that are here right now, what can local government do to help you expand? Also, you know, I'm not so naive to think that government has all the answers for business. We need to go to these businesses and say, "What do you think other businesses would like to come here?" What we need to do is we need to form a committee comprised of Commissioners and regional business leaders and ask these very simple questions. If you're not expanding, why aren't you expanding? What would it take government to do to help you expand? In addition, you know, it's government's responsibility to provide suitable infrastructure. We all know the 421 corridor is plagued because it does not have proper water and sewer infrastructure. So as a Commissioner, what we can do is we can discuss with business, ask them what they need, provide reliable infrastructure, low taxes, and decrease unnecessary regulations.
Thank you. Robert Murray?
There's probably multitude of things that we could do as County Commissioners to improve the economic area. One of the things is, we have basically just gone through a recap of telling us that we are a tourist destination. We try to draw the tourist people in here. Well, why don't we have something for them to do? They go to the beach, they get into rip currents, and they can't swim. So all they do is end up staying in a hotel. Why don't we get Mr. Gilmore to come up here and put some theaters in? Why don't we try to drag him into that? Let's get us a big water park. Let's make out some barefoot landing up here. You know, let's try to get something like that to expand our tourist drawl, if you will. That's one thing we need to do. The other thing is, as Mr. Hickey stated, we can go out and talk to our corporate people here. What can we do to help you make it better? We can talk to our local businessmen. What can we do? How can we help? But there again, why not play to our strengths? Let's play to, you know, if we call ourselves a tourist destination, so why not just play to our strengths? Let's get something up here. How many people would go to a Gilmore Theater down here that's even local, instead of driving to our beach? Keep our money at home. That's one thing we can do. One thing I would pursue.
Thank you. Woody White?
Well, Rachel, I think we're... you're in here a lot of agreement on this issue from this panel. A couple of things I'll point out first. I think the doctor read the right prescription. What he talks about... And I thought he was doing something right.
We'll give you a couple of... We'll give you a few more seconds for that.
See, everybody agrees on this. Derek's got it right for the first part about talking to business, asking them, you know, "What are we doing to get in your way? How can county government make your life easier? How can it make your life more fairly able to compete with people?" I had a guy call me just yesterday and said, "I had pier damage in a storm recently, and I'm getting it..." Or a dock up here, a dock, I'm getting it redone. The county inspector came down here and said, "I have to put a fire hydrant on this thing." It's on a dock with a boat that's fiberglass. You don't even treat a fiberglass boat. It catches on fiberglass water. I don't think, Rob, you would probably do that. But, you know, as just an anecdote, the idea that government needs to be there, as Derek and Beth said, to facilitate business and economic development. Secondly, I'll say, the current board gets a lot of things right. They don't always get it wrong. One of the things they got right was last spring, Jonathan Barfield's encouragement over the last couple of years, a strategic plan. The county never had one. If I'm not stealing another, Jonathan, we're going to talk about that. But the county now has a strategic plan. I think some things need to be looked at on it, but by and large, it sets out our plan of what we need to do as it relates to economic development and other things over the next five years. We need to constantly look at that and think about it as it affects our future.
Thank you. Rob Zappel?
Thank you, Rachel. One of the most important jobs of the County Commissioners is fostering the economic growth of New Hanover County. of New Hanover County. I think they can do that in very three specific ways. By first, cooperation. Cooperation with our local governments and with the different agencies and start talking together to stop this political divide that has seized us and stopped so much forward motion in our county and frankly, in our nation as well. So cooperation. Also, clear, meaningful policies so that a person who wants to visit in New Hanover County can pick up the zoning regulations and read and understand clearly what's going on. Take the guesswork out of it. Also, communicating the needs and the problems of New Hanover County directly to the citizens and providing the discussion and the platform so that we can begin to resolve or at least address these issues. Those three things, I call them the three Cs. That's cooperation, clear meaningful policies, and communication. We also need to learn to build on our strengths. We have a wonderful diversity of businesses and corporations here in New Hanover County, but that would also include small businesses, institutions, nonprofits as well. They all act as sticky threads, creating a fabric that in turn sits on top of our solid tourism-based economy, and that's where we get a strong, sustainable economy here in New Hanover County. We also have a diversity of workplace skills, and we should find ways that we can take those individuals that are working throughout our county, from the film industries all the way to the larger industries, GE, Corning, and those who are involved in our arts and cultural community as well. We have a huge diversity of that, and we're not taking full advantage of that. I would support the recruitment of clean industry.
Thanks very much, Scott. Jonathan Barfield.
You know, the reality is, county has been in the economic development business for quite a while, but it's really not known. DSS, huge budget, spends a lot of money on daycare providers throughout our community, wait, transit, taxi cab companies, to say the least, our hospital, county-owned asset, our health department, our airport. We're actually in that business. As my fellow candidate mentioned, in 2011, when I was chairman of Rockwater County Commissioner, my number one goal was to have a strat plan, understanding that our county had not had a plan in over seventy-two years. And my thought is, how can you go where you're going if you have no road, document, no vision or plan to get you there? We took to the heat for hiring a consultant committee to help us with that plan, but it was the right thing to do. And with that, we discovered that economic development was one of our eight core values. And in my opinion, once you decide something is core to you, then you invest money to it. And I would actually take in a new position within our county, take in one person that allowed them as a strategic director to allow our strat plan with our budget, to make sure that our budget and our strat plan aligned with one another. Some things that I would love to do would be to partner with UNCW and with their entrepreneurship program, while the city of Wilmington to provide some type of incubator downtown to put small businesses back to work in our community. It's amazing that a grant of one, three thousand dollars would do a world of good for small businesses trying to get started within our community. And that desire and that thought process is already there. The city of Wilmington is moving forward with that. My goal is to bring county to the forefront of that as well. 421, we are actually working with Penning County to bring one sewer to 421 to try to develop that particular corridor. So I think you're going to see some great things happening within the future within that particular location. And it's kind of neat that, certainly as a county commissioner, I actually go to quite a few business centers with companies that are looking at coming to our community. We took, we have at the table our community college president, Derek McKee, from Long here, Wilmington Industrial Development, Scott is there as well.
Time. Thank you.
So much to talk about.
Tricia Vance of the Star News, please direct your next question to Derek Hickey.
We'll have a little bit shorter question, perhaps. Do you support the proposed baseball stadium that Wilmington is looking at? And should the county have skin in the game and show them the financial benefit?
That's a good question. I would tell you that I would love to see a baseball stadium in Wilmington. Some of my fondest memories as a child was my father taking me to baseball games and buying me too much food, and I felt sick afterwards, maybe not watching most of the game. I would love to share that with my little boy. Having said that, I would not support a taxpayer-funded baseball stadium. You know, just because I happen to love baseball and love to share this with my children doesn't mean I should burden the taxpayers with this, with my wish. One of the ways to improve the economy is to lower the tax burden, not increase the tax burden. I've heard lots of people talk about the economic impact of, you know, bringing the baseball stadium downtown, and I agree, it will bring people downtown from other places in Wilmington. What it will do is it will transfer tax dollars from people who don't live downtown and bring some money, some small amount of money, to the businesses who are downtown. I would firmly, wholeheartedly support a privately financed baseball stadium. Now, I don't pretend to know the economics of baseball, but because it's been so much entranced by both Mandalay and by Ripken Baseball, you know, I do firmly believe that if city council pursued negotiations in a reasonable way, we could have a quality baseball stadium and minor league baseball team in Wilmington that is privately financed and not borne on the backs of the taxpayers.
Thank you. Robert Murray.
I fully support a baseball field. I've enjoyed baseball all my life. I've played baseball all my life. But I don't believe the baseball field should be built on the taxpayer's back. I think it should be privately funded. I think it would be a boon to us with our, Derek, going back to what I said with the tourist industry, when they can't swim, they can go to the baseball game. Hey, let's look at it the right way. But I still, you know, I think baseball, baseball field would help us out with our economics in the area. But I don't believe putting on the taxpayer's back is wrong for what you are along.
Thank you. What do you want?
Tricia, your question was, do you support it in its present form? The answer is no. And in any future form that involves taxpayer money, I wouldn't support it either. In nineteen, sometimes bond referendums and raising taxes to build public facilities is worthwhile. For example, when our hospital was falling down, Walker Memorial, nineteen fifty-eight, the voters of this county considered a bond for the hospital. They turned it down. They rejected it. Three years later, they considered the same bond again. It passed. Our hospital was built in nineteen sixty-seven, and thankfully, we have one of the best hospitals in the state now, thanks to the REIT. What I'm worried that's going to happen is that people are going to vote it down this time, and our elected leaders are just going to try it all over again. But baseball stadiums aren't like hospitals. Now, the second part of your question, or I guess my second part of answering the question, is that government has to get back to the basics, folks, the basics. And government doesn't exist to build sporting facilities, in my opinion. That's my philosophy. That's the philosophy I'll have as county commissioner. We have to get the basics right. We can't give everything to everyone. We have to deliver safe, clean water. We have to protect our citizens with firemen and police officers. We have to do the basic social services that we know why government exists, the purposes of government. Would it make money for certain businesses? Would people benefit? Would there be a multiplier effect possibly? Those are all good things. But those aren't the basics. And if you're looking and surveying these candidates and you're asking yourselves, what philosophy do I want my leaders to have? That's going to be my philosophy. Not saying no to everything, but prioritize getting back to the basics, and that's what I would do.
Thank you. Rob Sappel.
The idea of a multi-use facility that could be used for baseball and for a variety of other things that were suggested has great potential. And I applaud the city council and Mayor Sappel for being creative and trying to find different ways to move our economy forward. But it needs the cooperation of all the local governments, and that simply did not happen. This idea in itself is good, and I would differ with my fellow candidate here, Woody, in that we need to put everything out there. Every idea that needs to be bought out of judgment needs to be talked about. There needs to be some cooperation. There needs to be a conversation, and this is one very specific example, a very public example, of our, in this case, county commissioners and city council not talking at all about something that affects every person's life. So we're to a point now where this issue of the baseball stadium, we'll have a vote on November the sixth, but half of the people in the county will have no say in this, even though it will affect them in one way or the other. That's not right. We need to start talking. Our elected officials need to start talking and working together so that we can cooperate, so that we don't end up in a situation like this again. The thirty-seven million bond dollar bond issue that's out there, and I'm speaking now as a city of Wilmington resident, because I am, needs more details, and I know that more is coming. But at this point, I have a difficult time supporting it. I don't know where the exact size is going to be. I don't know what the building is going to look like. I don't know if we have guarantees or commitments or if those are the same things for a team or a Mandalay or the Braves to be there for twenty years.
Time.
A seasoned politician would say yes, no. I'm the only person sitting on this today that actually went to see the Durham Bull Stadium with the city council and looked at what happened in that particular community to see the economic development that took place in downtown Durham as a result of the baseball stadium being there, to talk with the Goodman family and see the investment that they made within that particular community. I think the number was nine hundred million dollars of infrastructure went in downtown Durham as a result of the stadium being there. For our community, that would bring roughly three and a half million dollars in additional property tax to our community, along with sales tax coming in as well. Now, if you're talking about economic development, that is a perfect way to, number one, help lower your tax base while also stimulating job creation within our community. I talked to a friend out in the window, and he was a former president of the Board of Realtors in Durham and also the state president. He said, "Jonathan, we fought this thing tooth and nail when they tried to do this in Durham. You will never find anyone in our community now that will say that they did fight. It's been one of the best economic tools we've used in our industry, among others, in our community." Long-term, I think it's going to help decrease our property tax rate by bringing in more dollars into our community against sales tax. We passed a portion of sales tax two years ago. That's bringing in roughly seven million dollars, additional dollars into the county budget, which is just over three and a half cents, just over three pennies, just over two pennies on our tax rate. That's pretty significant for the average property tax owner within our community, understanding the sales tax is paid by everyone, whether you're a visitor here, a renter, or a property owner. And every dollar that we spend in county government is taxpayer money. I hear people talk about taxpayer money all the time. It's all taxpayer money, whether it's a sales tax, whether it's a property tax. We don't get money from ourselves. We use taxpayer money to do what we do in county government, and this is part of economic development. Looking at our county being a tier-three county, when companies are looking at coming to our community, they get less tax credits from the state for job creation because we're a tier-three county, a prosperous county. And companies are looking for assets or things for their employees to do when they come to the community. You can go to Columbus County, you can get a great job there, but what do you do when you get out of work?
Time. Thank you. Beth Dawson.
It continues to be good news when organizations and businesses want to invest in New Hanover County. And as much as I would like to see the potential economic development that would come from a ball field or another organization's endeavor, I do not think that now is the time for the county to participate in incentives or tax breaks to bring a major or mine or whatever against ball field to New Hanover County. I would much rather see commerce downtown. I would much rather see private sector businesses investing in our county, bringing good jobs, good-paying jobs, and businesses that are compatible with our coastal environment. So at this point, as much as I would promote the consideration of potential public investment for some things, the ball field has too many unknowns at this point. I'm much more concerned about adequately funding our law enforcement, our fire and emergency rescue services, and making sure that our infrastructure, our water, our sewer, our trash needs are taken care of to serve the needs of all of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky Janowski of the Greater Wilmington Business Journal, please ask your next question and direct it to Robert Murray.
So granted, film tax incentives are a state issue, but next year, it is highly likely the General Assembly will be looking at tax reform, and the current state film tax incentive package goes only to 2014 at this point. So I'm curious, if you're elected and you're meeting with our local legislative delegation, what will you be telling them as your stance about this particular tax incentive?
Granted, the film industry, there's actors and filmmakers that are in there and utilize our area for filming, creates jobs, creates a lot of people out there as they are at work. Matter of fact, I know, I probably know about two dozen people that work exactly. And they go out there and do the problem. I would try to influence their way of thinking to continue that tax incentive, being able to give that tax incentive to, to afford to come in here and film and be able to keep that industry in. We need, we need to work, you know, work in here and leave the people going. We need the people being put to work and be able to...
Thank you. What do you want?
Vicky, although different jobs earn different wages, all jobs have, there's dignity in all work. They all have the, you know, basic core assumption and value proposition that they're employed, they're providing for their families, they're supporting their community. Incentives hit industry against industry. Incentives unfairly pick one job over another job that is no less worthy of government assistance or help. And so as a philosophy, incentives put government in a position of cannibalizing its workforce, and I don't believe in that. The film incentives is nothing more than the product of clever lawyers and lobbyists that have gone to states over the last twenty years and gotten bills passed. That's what it is. And if we say anything different, we're not being truthful about ourselves. Now, I love that we have the film industry here. It's fun for my kids to watch some of the scenes when we take them there and see the extras and the movie stars here. I get it. But to me, a job is a job, and as a county government, we need to make sure that we try to not pick winners and losers, that we let the free market do these things. Now, I understand that might be a naive, utopic view of how it's done, because Louisiana, Mississippi, and South Carolina, and Tennessee, and Canada, on and on and on. Each year, incentives get a little richer, a little richer, a little smarter lobbyist in another state gets a better tweak bill, and they come back to North Carolina and they say, "Well, wait, Louisiana did this, you need to do it too." And that's how we've gotten here. So I would leave if the legislative delegation next year, if they ask me that, that's the opinion that I'll share with them, and they're free to do whatever they want.
Thank you. Rob Sappel.
The film and television industry discovered New Hanover County in the early eighties. It went on a rocket ship ride of film production to a point in the mid-nineties, there was a two-year period where they did over six hundred million dollars worth of film and television production work right here in New Hanover County. Things changed. Film industry was lured away. Things have changed again. Film industry is coming back in a strong way in the last two years, in part because we have a fantastic crew base, those are the men and women who make the films, who live right here, the hundreds of families that stay right here in New Hanover County, and also because of the film incentives offered by the North Carolina State Legislature. So this year, we've already done one hundred and fifty million dollars worth of film and television production work right here in New Hanover County. We're on track to do over two hundred million dollars. So that means when you get a production like Iron Man Three, it comes in here and puts over eighty million dollars into our local economy. When they finish, not only do we get a great film that I can go and enjoy with my grandson and we can look, and it has a wonderful glow to our tourism industry at all, but when they pack up their trailers and they move away after leaving their eighty million plus dollars here, there are no smoke stacks. That's clean industry and smart commercial development.
Thank you. Jonathan Barfield.
So how many people here watched Revolution the other night? I know that I did. You know, my dad was on the Board of County Commissioners here back in the eighties when the first film was filmed here, Five Star with Drew Barrymore. And I've seen nothing but some... And I've seen nothing but significant growth take place within our community since then. I know that our governor went to California a couple of years ago and met with the folks in California to see what incentives they were offering and tried to entice or encourage our general assembly here to increase our film incentives, which we did, but I don't think there are nearly enough, recognizing how many jobs are produced right here within our own community. I used to own a disc jockey business called Starlight Entertainment, for those who remember that company. And I did a lot of work within the film industry, providing music for their rap artists when they finished filming. A lot of folks have benefited financially in this particular community alone, Southport, you know, Brunson County, Pender County, for the film industry being right here. And when things went south, a lot of folks were hurting, a lot of folks lost their homes because that job source was indeed depleted. So we need to find every way that we can to encourage those folks that represent us and Ron to at least maintain the film incentives that we have, but not indeed increase those. Again, looking at Iron Man coming to our community and the economic impact it has had on our community. Again, we're here talking about economic development, and that's what it's all about. It's about jobs. And I see so many people, college educated, that have degrees, that can't find a job in our community. We've got to find ways to put people in our community back to work, come together and make those things happen. This is one great industry that's going to do that for New Hanover County and for this particular region. So I'm encouraging.
Thank you. Beth Dawson.
Well, I could hardly get out of my driveway tonight because there's film filming on the block right across the street. So I have been with and supported the film industry for many years. Actually, I had a film filmed at our home. Until such time, the General Assembly, and hopefully next session, will tackle potential reform to corporate tax code. We need to be able to be competitive in the global market. I mean, we talk about global market, we are in the global market, but talking specifically about film incentives as we are, I believe an incentive to any business, whether it's the film industry or not, we need to evaluate the return on investment. That's the bottom line. The film industry here, nearing two hundred million dollars in spending just this year, that's a good return on investment, folks, and we employ thousands of people. I am not necessarily going to say every business or every industry should benefit through potential public investment, but I'd say, as your leader, we need to look at what's in the best interest of job development and the best interest of all the citizens. I will carefully evaluate the risk and return on investment of any public, potential public investment. One thing we do need to realize is that business incentives in North Carolina and in the southeast, we're very competitive. We don't need to put our head in the sand and think they don't exist, and that we don't need to deal with them. They are important to bringing good jobs, look at the benefits that they work for bringing Horizon Wireless here, twelve hundred good paying jobs. So there are some cases when it is in the best interest of New Hanover County.
Thank you. Derek Hickey.
I haven't agreed with two of my commissioner candidates with differing views. I know it sounds a little schizophrenic. Let me start out by agreeing with Mr. White. You know, in general, I'm opposed to incentives. I'm opposed to government picking winners and picking losers in the free market. I believe that we should incentivize all businesses by providing an economic environment that is, again, that has low tax rates, low regulatory burdens, and an effective responsive government that is accountable. Living in New Hanover County, we're fortunate that we have a beautiful place to live, and we're fortunate that the film industry has chosen New Hanover County. We've all spoken about how it does provide, you know, good, well-paying jobs that are sustainable and don't pollute. It also adds to the sense of place. It also adds to our tourism industry. Just the other day, I was walking, working out in the gym, and I walked down the stairs, and I ran into an actress, and I thought she was someone I knew, a friend, and I just about said hello until I realized who she was. That's what makes Wilmington what it is. But at the same time, I agree with Ms. Dawson, you know, the film industry is very important to New Hanover County. And currently in New Hanover County, we're fortunate because the entire state subsidizes our economic development. What we do need to have is a study on return on investment. Like every other investment that government makes, if the return on investment is greater than what we put into it, then it's a sound investment. To this date, I know of no such study on return on investment. But like every government expenditure, it should be based on standard rules of accounting. What we put in, we should get poured out, and that's a sound investment. So I agree with both of my fellow candidates.
Thank you. It's time now to switch gears to the second portion of the forum, in which audience members may ask the questions. We've also solicited questions in advance via email, and we have some of those here. And as we explained at the top of tonight's forum, there are explicit rules that accompany this segment, and it's these rules that allow us to have this as a live event with questions that were not re-screened. So please respect the rules. The question must be in the form of a question. We will not allow any statements. You will have a thirty-second time limit to complete your question. The question must be directed to all of the candidates. If you do have a question, please line up behind Julie Martin, who is the master keeper of the audience microphone. She will hold the mic. She will not let you have it. Scott, our timekeeper, will time you, so that this is fair. Thirty seconds, once again. Please state your name and then ask the question. And please remember, I know that this doesn't need to be said, but I'm sorry, I'm going to say it anyway, the name of the game is respect. And just remember that the most powerful tool you have is your vote, and you can exercise your selections at polls. Please hold any applause or any jeering until after the forum, and be kind. That said, thank you very much for participating in this forum and in the democratic process. Does anyone have a question?
There's still a lot of obstacles around here. My name is Maggie Parrish. My question is, how would you connect the terms global warming or climate change and economic development? What do you see as the link between the changes that are coming to this county in terms of climate and our economic development? And how can government be part of that change?
Thank you. And you will begin with Woody White.
I'm going to defer that question to Rob's. Well, ma'am, that's a tough question to answer. I will say, just as a general understanding that I have as a candidate in public office, that we have rules and regulations at the federal level and at the state level. A county is not employed air quality control engineers or anything like that. The county does regulate smoke stacks, where they go, the town maybe helps it all. As it relates to global warming, I regret and am humbled by the fact that I'm not qualified for a relevant opinion about that. I'm aware of the two sides of the debate. I try to be up on issues. I'm not sure what a county government can do without global warming, but a county leader sure can try to protect its citizens. And I know the special use process that the next board might be asked to consider as it relates to air quality control and certain issues coming here. The first question they're going to have to answer to the satisfaction of that new board is, does your company present any unreasonable risk of harm to its citizens? And there's going to be evidence taken of that, medical evidence, scientific evidence. It might not relate directly to global warming, but it sure will relate directly to the two-hundred-six-thousand people that call this county home. And so I'm not sure if I've answered your question, but I will say that I try to be up on the issues, and county government, even though it's almost as low as you can go in public office, right, Rob? They still serve a function, the front line of defense for the citizens, and I hope I've answered your question to some satisfaction.
Thank you. Rob Zappel.
Maggie, I'm going to try and come at this in a slightly different way, but hang with me on this, okay? Water quality, and water quality or drinking water is an issue that's going to dominate as we move forward. It's going to dominate development, it's going to dominate public health. And so connecting that to global warming, the rising of the seas, where we live, which is on a coastal community here, even a rise of an inch, two inches, six inches, or a foot, is going to directly affect the salinity in many of our coastal wells. Switching here slightly to the development, as you know, I'm a builder, and the issues of rising water and the ocean coming closer to coastal mottes is a very serious one for the development community along the beaches, up and down our entire county. How much the ocean will rise? I don't know, and I think there's a serious debate about it. I think that the evidence of global warming is overwhelming. I know that we have to begin the discussion now, we have to plan for it, everything from insurance rates to the safety of those people who build, and whether or not they should or shouldn't build for their own safety, and the safety of their neighbors and other people who could be affected by damage that could be caused by that. All the discussions will need to happen. So yes, global warming is something, warming is something that affects all of our lives and will going forward, both in our drinking water and in our development.
Thank you. Jonathan Barfield.
Our county is actually building a fish right now, as you all know, we have an SO2 problem here. I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC about a year and a half and speak to the number two person at EPA about SO2, and how can we mitigate those issues within our community, understanding that the more pollution you put into the atmosphere, the more pollution in the store with ozone matter, which is going to cause global warming. We look at the fact of our poor wax capsule building and the long wait within our work. One thing that we look at is looking at what kind of issues we bring to our community, less smoke stacks, looking at trash, for instance. Should we do a transfer station or burn the oil facility? If you do a transfer station, you're putting more vehicles on the road, putting more pollutants into the air, therefore, you're actually fighting against the whole idea of global warming, as opposed to burning it in our own setting. With our sustainable facility, we talked about putting additional scrubbers into it to decrease the amount of perjury going out, as well as SO2, below the standards that I typed in senior community out everywhere it's going in our community. But really looking at the fact that we passed a special use process within our own community to look at what industries are coming to New Hanover County, make sure that it fits, number one, with our center here, so that it doesn't add to the pollution that's already taking place within our community. So those are some of my thoughts on global warming and the economy. And they really go hand in hand. The more industry you try to get to your community, the more cars you put on the road. So the question is, what is it then?
Thank you. Beth Dawson.
This is an interesting question. Thank you for bringing that up. I believe, first of all, it's very important that our county and municipal government boards, our leaders, work together in strategic planning for our future. The course we chart for the future today will determine the quality of life for tomorrow, whether it has to do with air quality emissions, whether it has to do with water quality, whether it has to do with local warming, and I believe you also said climate change. One thing that we have enjoyed for so many years, those of us who have lived here, is the wonderful environment that we live in, our temperature here is the first of October, and we still have people going to the beach, it's just wonderful. I would never want to do anything to harm our environment, our air, those quality of life issues that contribute so much to our economy and to our tourism, which is our number one, our number one economic engine here. I would definitely support the strict adherence to federal and state rules and regulations as they affect those issues, that air quality and water quality, and I would also support the, would want to support the effective and efficient regulatory processes that all businesses need to follow when they want to do business here in New Hanover County. So I'm not sure if that really answers your question, but know that I will work hard to do my homework and ask tough questions if I, as I wanted to serve, and make informed decisions on behalf of the health, safety, welfare of all of our citizens.
Thank you. Derek Hickey.
Well, Maggie, if I want to ask you to get up and get to that, it's the same question. We always have a problem. I will tell you that this isn't a good question, because I don't think anyone on this panel expected to get this question, so it's... It's funny to come up with something sort of off the cuff. You know, I'm not an expert in global warming, and there is a big risk debate on both sides of the issue, and how much this is going to affect things like the rising of the coast. Having said that, as a physician, I understand that it's about health, and I understand the problems with SO2 in our air, problems with climate particular matter. Myself, I'm an avid runner, triathlete, and I have two children. And the reason we live in New Hanover County is because it's a beautiful place to live. And I do know that burning more stuff and putting it in the air, whether or not you debate the merits of global warming, isn't good, okay? Putting bad things in the air that we're going to breathe isn't good for us. I think everyone, no matter how they feel about global warming, can agree on that point. County government does have a role, and actually, the business of county has a role. You know, when you look at, one of the things that's going to improve our air quality the most going forward is the transfer of a sudden plant coal to natural gas. Now, why is that happening? Well, part is regulation, but a large part is because natural gas is cheaper. Going back to the Business Journal, we have GE in our backyard that's going to be able to produce, you know, uranium for our nuclear power plants. That is sustainable energy that doesn't contribute to global warming. I'm going to finish there, because I just lost my train of thought.
Thank you. Robert Murray.
I hope I can remember the question. Global warming, climate control, climate change, and stuff like that. I've lived in this county for six years, and I've seen a lot of different plays, different We have to rely on the federal and state government, whenever they come in and they, a plant or industry puts in a request, you know, to build, we have to rely on them. They go in there and they make those people adhere to those rules and regulations that we have. We also have to keep monitoring them. We have to keep an eye on them, because you let them go, they're going to do just what they want to do. Okay? So we have to, we have to be able to monitor and keep on them. There are certain things that we're going to have to let, come in here if we want to improve our economic development and our economic standard within the county. There again, I agree, Dr. Hickey, I hate putting things in the air. I've got a farm, and I can see change on my farm in some cases. When it rains, I can see spots on my plants that have never been there before. So yeah, we have a problem, but can we stop it all? No, ma'am, I'm sorry, but that's just the way it works. All we can do is rely on what we have in base with our federal and our state regulations, and be able to monitor things, and be able to play watchdog on them, make sure that they don't exceed those limits or exceed those areas that have been restricted.
Thank you very much. Do we have another question from the audience? Please say your name.
Good evening, I'm Rod Devallby, executive director of the Arts Council of Wilmington, New Hanover County. And my question to county commissioner candidates is, what role should the county play in clean, indigenous, non-regulated, arts-driven economic development?
And Rob Zappel, if you would address that question first.
Yes, thank you for the question, Rod. The arts and cultural community in Weir County is incredibly important economic driver. It helps with the stability of our economy and also with the growth of our economy. I've had the opportunity to work in a number of different arts and cultural organizations and institutions, and I can speak firsthand experience of just how important it is. I can only, I think everybody in this room can only needs to take a look at an institution such as Thalia Hall, which is the hub of so many different theater, dance, live... such as Thalia Hall, which is the hub of so many different theater, dance, live music, visual arts, and even, yes, film and television that's been shot there. And from that hub, so many things spring out. How many times have you been with people who've come from out of town and said, came in to see what can they do in our little town of Wilmington, Amelia, New Hampshire, and have been absolutely shocked at the number of theatrical productions, the number of live concerts, and the different venues that are around. For an population this size, it's amazing, and that's what draws people here, not only for tourism, but also for professional reasons as well. We, I would go as far as to say that it forms a part of the base of our economy here in New Hanover County. So yes, I would be very supportive of the arts and cultural community here, and I don't think that we would continue to grow without it.
Thank you. Jonathan Barfield.
You know, the county does actually, for the first time in a long while, funded Dream Center here, so the $10,000, so he showed that we want to invest in the arts community here. And I find that you have Kukalor's Film Festival here, you have the Black Arts Alliance that's here, Thalia Hall that's here, so many galleries in our community. First thing the county should do is recognize that there is a tremendous economic impact based on those organizations being in our community, and then find ways to partner with them to enhance what they're doing. I think, again, the first step was past year, our budget was parting of dreams and outacates with all those there. It'd be great if we could find a way to indeed fund the organization Miss Bellamy has, and indeed increase that as well. I went to the gala that the Cameron Arts Institute had this past weekend, the 50th anniversary, it was outstanding to see artworks such as Miss Biddy Evans, someone that actually grew up in the area that I grew up in, and to see her working, and recognize that we have tremendous talent right here in our community. How do we promote that when you see, again, Miss Bellamy bring in a young man who actually started a revolution, he was here a couple of years ago at her film festival? And just to look at the economic impact that those organizations have in our community, indeed partner with those organizations. I'm grateful and happy to see that they found the funding, the private sector to indeed open their doors and to get started, but at the same time, it's all about job creation and economic development.
Thank you. Beth Dawson.
Hey, Rhonda. I'm so happy to have you at the helm of the Arts Council, I think you're doing a great job, and I'm working on a great job. First of all, when businesses are looking to invest in New Hanover County, they come in and look at many other things, not just the quality of life offerings, but the governing boards of the county and the municipalities. Are they pro-business? Do they offer a pro-business atmosphere that will work with businesses? They also look at, of course, our education system, they also look at, of course, the tourism offerings, and of course, I'm quite favored the museum, having served on that board for several years. But primarily, it's the quality of life that brings businesses to New Hanover County that want to invest. And among those things that make up that quality of life are our cultural and our recreational resources, and we have so many to offer here. So I do feel like it is imperative that the county governing board, the county leaders or municipality leaders recognize how important organizations such as yours, like our museum, et cetera, our parks, contribute so much to the pieces of the puzzle for successful and strategic economic planning. So, and thank you for everything you're doing, and I'll let you bring to our community.
Thank you. Derek Hickey.
Hi, thanks, Ron, for the question. I agree with just about everyone out here, and I thank Rob Zappel for his contributions to the arts and cultural community. The arts and cultural community, and everyone agrees on this, has both a direct and indirect role in economic development. Certainly, it generates dollars in and of itself, but it also contributes to the sense of place. I've lived in some of what people would argue the biased cities in the country. I've lived in San Francisco, I've lived in Manhattan, and when I chose a place to live and to bring children into the world and raise my children, I could have lived anywhere. I'm a orthopedic surgeon, I could find a job anywhere in the country. One of the reasons we picked Wilmington was because of its cultural base. And so in addition to people coming in for tourism and for the direct impact that arts and culture has on this community, I do believe it's one of the reasons that businesses choose and people choose to locate Wilmington. And as a commissioner, I would be very supportive of the arts and cultural community in all its areas.
Thank you. Robert Murray.
Arts and culture is just, it's one of the most things that draw people to Wilmington area. On the culture side of it, there was a Mr. James Murray, who was one of the first settlers of the Wilmington area. He's one of my ancestors. I've got a little bit of culture going on there, you know. But that's one thing that we do, when people come in and they ask me, they come in to visit, they ask me, where did this come from, what kind of town is this, and what background? I've even talked to people that have moved in and bought homes, and they have no clue sometimes because of the area they're living in. And I start telling them about the area, and they just can't believe it. So yes, the Arts and Culture Council is very important to us, and we, you know, we need to keep that knowledge there, and we need to keep that knowledge out there, where people know what happened in this area, how did this area come to be? You know, did somebody just come in and sink a well and pump the water, et cetera? How do you know? But I think it's very important, and what y'all do is very important. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. Woody White.
Rhonda, we didn't have arts and culture in Blaine County where I grew up, I'll confess. The extent of our arts was spray painting on the gym behind Town Hall, and the culture was kicking the can around with red lights, grocery store parking lot when we ran our bikes. I moved there when I was six, and that's where I'm from. And that's a funny way of really commenting on the truth in rural areas where they don't have the benefit that we have. I had no idea about it, and it wasn't because it was kept from me, it just wasn't part of what I grew up seeing and learning and hearing every day. When I went to college, and Tammy can testify to this, there was not a time that went by that we didn't go to a free concert. I was so enamored with the excitement coming to our college, or some speaker, or, you know, on and on and on, the speaker series. My friends would make fun of us, you know, they'd go out to party or do things, maybe they shouldn't be doing this behavior, and Woody and Tammy weren't able to go to these things, and maybe that's because in the ones in the town where I grew up, we didn't have that benefit. And so, everybody said, I think agreed, but everybody agrees with what's already been said, but arts and culture is what makes up the fabric of our community here. It's one of many things that we have, the diversity that we enjoy in this town with its environment, with its business, industry, tourism, retirement, public education, university, community college, vocational training, we've got it all. And if we neglect one part of it, we're taking something away from the real value of our community. So I appreciate the question and what you brought up, and the comments on the other panelists.
Thank you. We may only have time for one more question here, and I'd love to use one of the questions that was submitted by email. As a twenty-something, jobs are hard to come by in this town. Our neighbors in the Triangle are able to attract high-tech, well-paying jobs, and I'm wondering why Wilmington can't get a piece of that pie. If elected, how would you position this community to bring in the amenity-based industries that supply jobs without compromising our quality of life? What are three specific job creators you would bring to this community? And we'll begin with Jonathan Barfield.
For me, it starts with vision. The story that's been told to me is that the Community 100, way back in the old days, when GE recruited to our community, GE was told, you can come here, but you can't pay wages that you're paying across the country, because we have one plant here in the town, we have copper wheel companies, they can't afford to compete with GE. So GE agreed to those terms. When they got here, then they started giving proposals, increasing in terms of increasing their salary, to get them up to the national average. It takes, in my opinion, vision, number one, to get to that particular point. As a twenty-something, now the daughter's 21, she's a senior USC Chapel student, and I am concerned about her future in terms of a job when she gets out of college, to the point where she's going to go back and get a master's degree in medical health administration, so we need to help her with that. We've got to find ways to partner again with UNCW, the Entrepreneurship Center, the City of Wilmington, with their entrepreneurship plans, and start incubator downtown, and find ways to attract more startup businesses to our community, and to indeed help them with small brands, $1,000, $3,000, whatever the number may be, to help them get their businesses started. I find it's a real true, there are so many people that come to our community, they just come here to start a business, they have no ties here, no family here, they recognize their great quality of life, quality of place, I'm going to start a business here, but sometimes it just needs a little extra help to indeed get there. And then also, find ways to work with them, they're going to build a building with our building inspection department, to kind of fast-track things to get them willing to be a little bit quicker.
Thank you. Beth Dawson. As I quickly repeat the very first part of the question. As a twenty-something, jobs are hard to come by. How can we compete with our neighbors in the Triangle who have high-tech, well-paying jobs? Why can't Wilmington get a piece of that pie? What are three specific job creators that you would bring to this community?
Well, I think that generally is a question about how we recruit and retain businesses, encourage on your membership, whether you're 20 or you're 60, or anywhere in between. Our county leaders must promote and maintain a pro-business atmosphere in order to recruit businesses to come here, and a piece of things we've already discussed, our quality of life and that type of thing. I think strategic planning with the variety of various economic development organizations that are in our community, and there are several, and we've all talked about them, and everyone has a separate idea of things they want to focus on to bring business. So I think first of all, a strategic plan, working with partnerships, with private sector business involvement, to come up with the plan that we need to recruit and retain businesses. First of all, I think it's important and imperative to promote responsible growth for business, or, first of all, we need to invest in our infrastructure, and we need to offer the ability for responsible growth, but with efficient and effective regulatory measures. The infrastructure strategic planning and just encouraging investment in our education system, and promoting the job training and job retraining programs, such as our community college offers, investment in the classroom, which we should be funding, in the classroom for our teachers and our students in K through 12. So you have to educate these future leaders, those that have jobs in the central part of the state, I think they're going to come here because they like our quality of life. We just need to be able to offer businesses that are compatible with our coastal environment and to have jobs.
Thank you. Derek Hickey.
Sure, I agree, this question is probably best answered on how you promote economic development in general. Now, I feel for this listener, since we're on the radio, because although the overall unemployment rate, as mentioned earlier, was nice, 4%, I think in New Hanover County, I do know nationally, and I have no reason to believe that locally it's any different, that unemployment rate among 20-somethings is two or three times that unemployment rate. So, and our economy slowly gets back on its feet, you know, these young people who are just getting out of college, well, they've been left behind, they can't find new jobs. It's not isolated to Wilmington, this is a national problem. So how does New Hanover County promote economic development? Well, it starts out by putting up the welcome mat, or welcome sign. We want good businesses to come to New Hanover County, and we also want good businesses to stay in New Hanover County. We need to, again, ask businesses, what can local government do to get you to grow your business? I was sitting at the pool this summer, a friend of mine was an executive at PPD, and I asked him that question. I said, you know, PPD started here with Fred Echelman, Fred Echelman has ties to the Wilmington area, but PPD is no longer owned by Fred Echelman, it's owned by privately, and there they go, there they can make the most money. And he looked at me and he said, I don't think anyone's ever asked PPD, what does PPD mean to be successful? So again, we have low taxes, you know, a reasonable regulatory environment, and a forward-thinking regulatory environment, so that businesses know what the regulations are going to be, and don't feel that, again, the 11th hour bureaucrats are going to change the rules.
Thank you. Robert Murray.
I feel for them. I would, I've seen a lot of people out there that can't find jobs, and that they're looking for it. What can we do for them? We have to try to attract industry, we have to do what we can. There again, it's kind of a agreement goes through the board that we have to, if we have to sit here, we have to do what we can, attract different industries in here, different businesses in here, different types in here, different types of businesses, the areas that businesses are in. We do need to diversify a little bit on what businesses we try to attract, maybe we need to, you know, kind of give what you might say, an entry-level job to get started with, and get people in there, and get, most people ask, what kind of history do you have, and you can't get them in there. If they don't have a job history, because they haven't happened to find a job. But what we need to do is make, I guess you would say, attract it to different industries, try to get it to a point where they look at it and say, hey, yeah, I like the area, and I like the incentive, and yeah, we're going to move down in here, let's go down in here, and we'll start creating jobs. That's one of the things we need to do. We need to make it attractive with businesses, and move here, and people to start businesses here, and people to keep their business going.
Thank you. Woody White.
Rachel, the listener's question, three specific job creators, I don't have three, but I have one, and it's a good opportunity to really talk about what this election for county commission is all about. This year, this November, with these panels here with the board, more than anything, what's going to help industry in this area, what's going to help people looking at bringing jobs here in this area, is toning down the surreal nature of our discourse that we've heard the last couple of years, restoring confidence in our county government, providing leadership. Now, those aren't job creators necessarily, but they're indirectly why folks might not be looking here. It's unacceptable, whether it's baseball or whatever it might be, that our county government can't sit down other than having breakfast at a well-contrived and choreographed photo loft with our city council members. They ought to have dialogue all the time, their staff ought to be told, it's unacceptable to fight and compete with each other. And that leadership starts at the top, and I submit that all seven, two of which are here tonight, of our city council, and all of our county commissions, probably, members, would agree with that. The leadership starts at the top. Tell the staff to find ways to work together, stop trying to find ways to divide us. Now, is that going to create jobs? In the long term, RTP has been successful with speaking at one voice and grabbing a global share of a labor force. They haven't done it by arguing and screaming and getting up at the table because of an apartment conflict, agrees with them, and said, you know what, we're not going to talk to you anymore. They've maintained a dialogue throughout the years, consistent with strategic planning, and that's what this election is all about, leadership.
Thank you. Rob Zappel.
I think that our 20-year-old questioner, the job creation actually starts many years before that. For me, in my mind, it starts back with smart starting, work form, investing heavily into our education of our youth, and all the way through. And it includes all the strong support for the K through 12, public school education, and then from there, investing into our Cape Fear Community College, and additionally into the UNCW. The concept here is a better educated workforce helps businesses find the qualified people, the qualified employees that they need to make their business better. The better that businesses do, the better that the economy goes, the more jobs that are on there. So it starts when our kids are three and four, and following that through
So it starts when our kids are three and four, and following that through, and takes the support of the community all the way through there. I say this because I believe that universities can be great drivers of economic growth as well. We only need to look at what, right here in North Carolina, the Research Triangle Park, where you have three institutions, you have Duke, U N C, and N C State there, that have combined with the companies, the private companies, and the Research Triangle Park, to bring us new products and new ideas. I think we've got the beginnings of that right here in New Hanover County with U N C W, that we can develop the same kind of research, development, and commercialization programs right here, that we already have the beginning of, with the Mar Bionics project that's happening right now through the marine technology department of the U N C W, with a partner with private, federal, and U N C W, to bring new ideas, new biotechnological drugs, from discovery to research to development, all the way through up to commercialization. That's forward-thinking.
Thank you. And with that, it's eight oh one, so I'll turn the proceedings back over to Julie Martin.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. First of all, I want to thank you all in the audience for coming out tonight and showing the confidence in this community to learn more about the people who are running for the Board of Commissioners. I want to thank the candidates for coming and so thoughtfully answering the questions. I want to thank Tricia and Vicki for coming and participating tonight, and I want to thank Rachel Pilburn and W H Q R for all the hard work they've put into putting this event on tonight. One last thing, you've got a little card in your seat directing you to participate in a survey that we have on our website. Please go in and answer that, that will help us learn more about you and improve the quality of our events here, knowing which you are. So, again, thank you all very much tonight, and I hope you have a wonderful evening, and go out and vote on November the sixth.